Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 23rd Milis School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Milis Public Schools website under the School Committee section. We will start the meeting with a roll call vote. Ms. Roach?
Here.
Mr. Conroy?
Here.
Superintendent?
Here.
Mr. Catalano?
Present.
And we told teacher reps and student reps they didn't need to attend tonight because we're going to a working session. Jody, has anybody signed in for open session?
There is not.
Okay. So we will start with consideration to approve the 1-9-17 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano?
I make a motion to approve the 1-9-2017, 2018.
Yes.
Oh, you're right.
Thank you.
That's happened all the time. 2018 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from 1-9-18. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a consideration to accept the report from Kirker-Pager investigation. So in, in the fall timeframe, the very beginning of the fall, the school committee made a decision to engage a third-party investigator to investigate allegations made by a member of the Board of Selectmen against Mr. Catalano. As Mr. Catalano is a member of the school committee and the school committee holds a Code of Ethics policy, we had asked a third-party to engage and do some research and come back to us with findings to see if any of those policies or procedures had been violated. So what we have tonight is that the vote is to accept the report from that investigation. The investigator performed a full investigation throughout the fall into the, into the winter and presented us their findings. And what I would like to read into the record tonight is the analysis and findings based upon that report. So this is page four of the report of findings from the investigator who is Allison Kirker, an attorney from Kirker-Pager. So Section 4 is, "The school committee tasked the investigator with rendering an opinion as to whether Mr. Catalano violated any applicable Milis School Committee district policy or whether he otherwise engaged in bullying, as that term is generally understood. The policy's Code of Ethics identifies three areas of responsibility for school committee members. One, community responsibility. Two, responsibility to school administration. And three, relationships to fellow committee members. The policy on harassment provides that, quote, 'harassment of any kind is prohibited. No messages with derogatory or inflammatory remarks about an individual or group's race, religion, national origin, physical attributes, or sexual preference shall be transmitted,' end quote." So there are three findings and a conclusion on page five. So the first finding is A, Mr. Catalano did not violate the Milis School Committee Code of Ethics. The Milis School Committee Code of Ethics applies to school committee members' interactions with the community, school administration, and fellow committee members. Since Ms. Barnes is not a fellow member of the school committee, that portion of the policy is inapplicable. The only portion of the Code of Ethics that may apply in this situation is Mr. Catalano's responsibility to represent the entire community at all times. There is no evidence that Mr. Catalano violated the spirit of this guidance by liking a Facebook comment that was generally critical of individuals who abstained from voting at a town meeting. Even if Ms. Chow's comment had been directed at Ms. Barnes, Mr. Catalano was well within his right to express frustration that an elected town official had refrained from voting on a project that had major implications for the town's school system. It should go without saying that Mr. Catalano did not give up his First Amendment rights to political speech when he joined the school committee. B, Mr. Catalano did not violate the Milis School Committee harassment policy. The Milis School Committee harassment policy only limits, quote, "derogatory or inflammatory remarks," end quote, when the same are made about a person or groups, quote, "race, religion, national origin, physical attributes, or sexual preference," end quote. Mr. Catalano's like of a Facebook comment that expressed frustration with individuals who abstained from voting at a town meeting did not implicate the harassment policy because his comments were not directed to anyone in a protected class. C, Mr. Catalano did not otherwise bully Ms. Barnes. Putting aside that Mr. Catalano did not violate the policy, he also did not bully Ms. Barnes. Bullying is generally marked as, marked by an imbalance of power, an intent to cause harm, and repetition. First, there was no imbalance of power between Ms. Barnes and Mr. Catalano. Indeed, both are seasoned elected town officials and both used a social media platform to express their opinions on a political issue. Second, there is no evidence that Mr. Catalano intended to harm Ms. Barnes. Mr. Catalano simply expressed his frustration that, after spending significant time and effort working with the ESBC to bring the funding of the school replacement project to a vote, an elected town official refrained from voting. Finally, even if Mr. Catalano's political speech was directed at Ms. Barnes, any purported criticism, excuse me, was limited to the June 5th comment. In short, criticism, particularly political criticism, is not bullying, online or otherwise. It is democracy. Section 5, conclusion. The investigator interviewed one witness who was identified to her as having relevant information and examined materially relevant tangible information to substantiate the factual findings described in Section 4 of this report. In conclusion, the investigator has offered her opinion that Mr. Catalano did not violate the policy, nor did he engage in any plausible form of bullying. So those were the findings by the impartial third-party investigator that was retained by the school committee. Our action item here today is a consideration to accept the entire report from Kirker-Pager.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we accept the report of the investigation from Kirker-Pager.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
Can I just have one, because in there where she references in the process where she interviewed one witness. A second witness was, and it's all thoroughly outlined in the report, but just because it isn't in this section, a second witness was invited to participate and opted not to. So it was not intended to be a one-participant-witness process.
Any additional discussion?
Madam Chair, I guess I would just say I completely agree with those findings and I'm glad we're able to read them on camera and bring closure to the topic.
Anything else?
I'm happy that it is over. I am happy with the findings, and now I want to get back to focusing on what is important, which is budget and policy. We have a budget working session, and I'm looking forward to engaging in that activity tonight.
So with that, we'll take a vote. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of, oh, you already made the motion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Aye, abstain.
Motion carries. Okay. Superintendent's report?
You have in your packets the January enrollment. We did gain one student, but we also gained three choice students, a family that has been attending, moved out of town, and would like to continue in the Milis Public Schools. So we are now at 90 choice students. As you can see from the historical, about five, six, seven years ago, we were at 60, 67, and we now have 90 choice students. Also in your packet is both a memo from Jen Starr, Director of Digital Learning and Innovation, Innovative Educational Technology, and the email she received from Steve Beland, the project manager of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts program that offered, has offered districts for the past couple of years opportunities to apply for state grants for improving our infrastructure. We did receive a grant two years ago for $110,000 to replace and improve the wireless infrastructure in the middle high school. And as part of that, then the, the program, the Massachusetts office, applied for E-Rate reimbursement. It does qualify for E-Rate reimbursement, and we will be receiving almost $42,000 in E-Rate reimbursement, which will go in a check to the town of Milis. So the, I wanted to bring this to the attention of the school committee that the 42,000, it's .41,953 and 86 cents, will be coming and will be going into the Milis General Fund and that we, I wanted you to be aware of that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
Nancy, we have the email. If there is, the email's great. I wonder if we can ask the state if they can give us some kind of formal grant letter. The reason that I want to get as formal in this as possible, and also maybe a follow-up question to find out if it has to go directly to the general fund.
We did ask, and he did say yes. It needs to go to the general fund.
So if we can...
We can get, ask him to send a hard copy letter rather than...
And even when a check, when the check comes or when the funds are distributed, that there's some identifier that this is, has a specific designation. As we all know, but everybody, money that goes into the general fund is historically used as just all money lumped in and then appropriated through the budget and warrant articles. This shouldn't be left in that pool. The other thing that's slightly unfortunate about it is if it goes into the general fund, we can only get it appropriated through town meeting. So if they send us this, if it comes in the next couple of months, maybe we'll have an opportunity to get it allocated and appropriated in May. Otherwise, we're not going to have access to this money until November.
Thank you. I will follow up on that. I also neglected to mention that in order to qualify for E-Rate reimbursement, we, as a district, had to purchase matching, or purchase equipment that qualified for the matching portion of the grant that was required. So we had purchased as part of that program in order to qualify for the $110,000, $44,880 worth of equipment, which was in the form of 120 iPads. So that was a requirement for us to participate, that we had to prove that we were supplying, as a district, a commitment for matching funds.
Additional questions? Anything else here?
Oh, I do. Thank you. Also, I may as well mention in your packets, under Correspondence, you have a flyer for, from the Hockamuck area YMCA noting that Milis was awarded, amongst other school districts, a Healthy Futures mini-grant for $880, which will support our initiative that Diane Dennehy and Annette Stead Tucker over at the Clyde Brown School developed, the mini-grant, which is called the Hundred Mile Club, which challenges students with a goal of walking or jogging 100 miles at school in a single school year. And the Hockamuck, we thank the Hockamuck YMCA for supporting that initiative. Also in your packets, you have a, an invitation to participate in our, in developing our digital learning and innovation plan that Jen Starr spoke to at our last meeting, I think it was our last meeting. And this has gone out to the community. We're seeking visionary volunteers, people who can help us put together the goals to keep us at the forefront of utilizing technology in innovative and effective ways. And school committee is also welcome. Any parents and staff members will be a part of that process as well. You also have a letter from, oh, the Office of Sean Dooley. And Sean Dooley, our state representative, and Senator Ross sent a joint letter to the Honorable Jeffrey Sanchez, who is the chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, supporting full rest reimbursement, or full funding of the Circuit Breaker program. The Circuit Breaker is a special education reimbursement to districts we apply for. It is for extraordinary or special education costs that are above three times foundation. And the funding this year was reduced from 75% to 65%, which for Milis is a reduction of almost $45,000. That's in Circuit Breaker, Circuit Breaker coming to us in this fiscal year. $45,000 is a lot for us in Milis, and it is, we appreciate very much that our representatives and senator are on board with seeking and requesting that the House and Senate fund that now that revenues are looking a little better at the state level at the full 75% for this year, and absolutely not reduce it for next year. And finally, we are in audit season. April U. has been working with Kathy LaPlante for, to provide the information that auditors are requesting. And one of the things they'll be requesting is, or they have requested, is an explanation, information regarding our legal line item. And I did check with our attorney, legal counsel, to see if, if this form, the letter we received was, it seemed to me to be a little bit different from past years, but he said this is very common. The law firms are very used to providing this kind of information to the auditors, and it is not out of the ordinary.
Questions on any of that?
Oh, I have one more.
Sorry.
Sorry. I forgot one more thing. Ryan Locke, one of our students, placed in the top 12 at the state level in the Voice of Democracy essay contest. Mary Ann Zembah, our U.S. History and Government teacher, went into the state, to the state reception they had for the students, and he received a small scholarship, a framed certificate. There were over 500 entries for the state of Massachusetts to, so for Ryan to place in the top 12 is quite an accomplishment, and we are very proud of Ryan and his accomplishments, and Ms. Zembah's support of all her government and students. We have, we have quite the, quite the program in, in U.S. government.
Excellent.
I think that's it.
Okay. Very good, very good. The next item that we have on the agenda, under the chairman's report, is we, as, as everyone knows, the new school project is underway. Maybe I'll flip these in leading into this next comment and give a brief update. So the work that's happening right now at the site, there was, there was a hold based on the weather. The hold is off thanks to some warm temperatures and now being down to a foot of frozen land or earth instead of two and a half feet. So they're working right now on retention wells that are being put underneath the old tennis courts. So that's first step as far as construction is concerned for them. They'll use that, and then others are being added as they build. But that's kind of the biggest news for them out of the course of the last meeting that we had. Foundation bids and steel bids and all sorts of big bids and contracts are being reviewed and approved and moved up to the Board of Selectmen for their final approval. So everything is moving along. At last check, which was a week ago, everything's still on track timeline-wise. We're still really early, but we're just hoping for some, not cold weather, I think, would be what we're hoping for, is if it stays relatively mild, we'll be in good shape so they can continue working throughout the winter. So with that in mind, there was a question that was raised as to, is there consideration for renaming the school? So we had decided to put it on the agenda and have some open discussion about if we would entertain that, what people's thoughts are on renaming the new school, and how we would go about that process. We don't have a formal policy on naming, of namings of the building, buildings plural, but it is under the purview of the school committee. We don't have a policy, but we're assuming that it would be something that would fall under this board's management. So I just wanted to open it up, actually, to see what people's thoughts were on renaming it, if we're open to that, and obviously, if we were to go through that sort of process, we would, what other schools have done, and Nancy did a bunch of research, and we've spoken to the project management team, what other towns have done is they've gone through this process of this, they've solicited community feedback, they've brought people in to talk about the names of the schools and reasoning why, they've shortlisted, and then they've selected. So a fairly straightforward process. It is one that the project team has asked us that if we are going to engage in renaming, that we make a decision on that in the next couple of months, because as they will look at design and all of that, they want to make sure that whatever's chosen fits in the place where they're planning on putting the name. So...
Logical.
Yeah.
Madam Chair. So was the school named Clyde F. Brown back when it was built originally? Do we know that? Has it always been named that?
I haven't done the research on the current name. I can do that. I believe that, yes, Clyde F. Brown was a principal at some point, but let me, let me look into that.
I read the...
It's on the painting right in there.
Only the year. There's no reason, but yeah.
Yeah.
I think he was the original principal.
I think so, too.
Up until, I forget, but it was 30-something years that he was the principal. And I believe he was the first principal.
So it'd be nice to honor him in some capacity if the name was changed, which I would be open to considering it and including community involvement. But it would be nice to honor that individual. It sounds like there's a long history in somewhere, and within the building, if the name were changed. That's my thought.
Other thoughts?
I think, I mean, I'm open to it, too. I think that we should put it out to the community and see what, what people's thoughts are. I don't even know if anyone's even thought about changing the name of the school or, you know, because we're building a new school, but I'd like to see what, what the community thinks about changing the name. And if we're going to change it, this is the time, so.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm open to going through that type of a process to see if there's any, to what the, what any feedback is and what any other options are, and if there's something more significant. I mean, the last time I was in there, I was poking around to see if there was a plaque as to what the basis for the dedication was.
36 years.
Yeah. No, but I, but there, but there's not a, that doesn't, there's nothing there that says why it was. It just, he, he just happened to be the, not that he happened to be the first principal, but his picture is up there, I think, more because he was the principal, not because they dedicated the name of the school. But I'd be, I would also be hesitant to change the name for something less of a direct significant impact. So, you know, not to just change it to Milis Elementary School. So if we were naming it after someone else, there would probably need to be a pretty good reason. But I do, that process of bringing it, I, when it first came up, my other concern is that it is a school committee decision, not a shared decision with the elementary school building committee or any other board or committee in town. And even the community, it's not a, putting it out for a vote, but that we control what that decision is.
And we, we raised it at ESBC, and they, I mean, we didn't, we raised it to say there's a possibility that we may have a discussion about this, and they said, just let us know. And they gave us the timeframe. So there was no, there was nothing from them as far as being involved in the process or anything like that, as a committee, as public citizens. Sure, but...
Madam Chair, I'm, I think we owe the community and owe this whole project the process, but I, I just, I'm a little bit hesitant that we don't, we don't, the train leaves the station, we feel like we have to do it, right? Or that the community thinks that because we've started this process, we're going to rename the school. If, I echo what Mr. Conroy says, if something significant comes up, that's fine, but I don't want to start the process and have everyone think that it's an automatic that the name will be changed. So I think we can, we can set expectations and clarify that initially, but I think, why would we not go through the process?
Would be, would the thought be to have a survey and have that survey, obviously, go through the, the school list serves, but also we want to go to the greater community? And it could be the wording of the survey, too?
Well, I think we have to be real clear that...
Right. We're not exactly sure we want to change it, but is there interest, if you had interest?
I mean, this is a significant, this is a significant milestone.
I mean, I would almost look at it not so much even as a survey, but the first communication would be something along those lines of, the school committee is entertaining this. For anyone who wants to go through the effort of, that has an idea and wants to bring a proposal and a rationale...
A nomination.
Yeah. That that's what is not...
A nomination might be a better way to do it.
That we...
Yeah. Something of historical significance.
But doesn't nomination give the implication that, once you nominate, that we're going to pick?
No, not if we get three or four.
So I could, I mean, we could say that Clyde Brown, that the, one of the considerations is to leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
I think Jen's right. It's all about how we word it.
Right.
And I think that we can leverage what other towns have done and kind of borrow from them going through this process.
It'd be interesting to see what, how many towns have actually started this process and ended up with a name change, opposed to going to what Mark says. The easy way out would be the Milis Elementary School, which, after all this time, just seems...
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, you hear them named after former administrators, you hear them named after former presidents, former town leaders, and that's what you typically hear.
So I don't want to rain on the parade, but what level of, what, what cost will we incur? Now, I know there's not a lot of necessarily printed stationery and names, but are we, and they may be insignificant, but there would be some cost, but I don't know what they would be.
There's a...
20 years ago would be, there would be a lot of stationery and cards and a lot of other stuff that...
There is a bit of rebranding, too. Like, can you, can you, can you roll in the PBIS, like the Bears, and does the Bears go with the new name? And is there a way to do that? Because it's the Clyde Brown Bears, and it's CFB, and it's all the stickers on the back of people's cars. Like, as we start to talk about it, there are a lot of things to take into consideration.
You're just saying it makes more money by selling more stickers.
There you go. But there's, which is, which I think speaks to the, what's the community's sense on all of this? Because if they're really attached to Clyde Brown for all of these reasons, maybe there's no interest, but at least we've asked the question.
Right.
So, so I'm happy to reach out to, I can reach out to Jeff, actually, from Compass, because he said that he would help, he would share some, what other towns have done. They have a couple of recent projects, but they were brand-new buildings. They weren't tearing down and building, rebuilding a brand-new building. So I'm happy to reach out to Jeff. I know you did all that work with the other superintendents to get their input, but let me see if they have, what they took as their first step.
Sure. And I'm happy to, to write up a little synopsis, do, you know, the research... And I'm happy to, to write up a little synopsis, do, you know, the research and around Clyde Brown, and was he principal, first principal, like, we think, in 37 years, et cetera? And maybe what the time span is.
Yeah. Perfect. So if you do that, and I'll reach out to Jeff, and then maybe...
Madam Chair.
Yes, sorry.
We have a question.
We have a question from the audience.
Can you come up and just speak to the microphone, just so? She's trying to hide.
My name is Robyn Brinkson. I'm a Millis resident. I'm also a public school teacher in Needham, and we are building a new elementary school, and I just wanted to throw my two cents in about that. And they, the school committee and the town, decided to name the new elementary school after an alumni, a distinguished alumni of that school. So it's the Hillside Elementary School, and it's Sunita Williams, who was a Navy captain and astronaut, and she is the, she came to the dedication and the groundbreaking and spoke to the kids and do that kind of, so that's how they, that's who they picked for it.
How did you go, was there a process? Do you know? I mean, I know you're not a resident.
I teach elementary school, so I just know from all the, like, general school emails that we get what happened, and she came and spoke the first day of school to all the teachers at the first day of school. So I'm not sure the whole process, but I just wanted to throw my two cents in about what they did there for that.
I can get that from Dan.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. So we will do that research, and then we'll come back and we'll put it on the agenda again for an update, and then we'll see where we go next.
Good.
Okay. I did school committee, elementary school building update, Healthy Futures, we did School committee announcements. None for me. Mr. Conroy?
No.
Nope.
Do you have anything else? Nancy?
No.
Okay. We are going to adjourn to working session to discuss capital planning and budget, and we will not be returning to open session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn to working session, not to come back to open session.
Seconded. So moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.